It's July, I'm sorry, it's June fourth, twenty twenty four. I'll call the July, June fourth, meeting of Town of Wellington Planning and Zoning Commission. Or. Let's see, President is Andy Marcos, Bob Shabbitt, Rebecca Sinowski, Joe Vaughn, Doug Roberts, Joel Burnell, and Mike Johansson. I'll, I'll seat Mike Johansson for Walton herself. Application or receipt?
No, nothing.
No public hearings? New business? Yeah, well, yeah, ongoing. Driveway improvements on three twenty nine Ruby Road.
So this one was, I put on here originally for the Down East Green Project for the commercial development between the ramp and TA. So one of the conditions of approval is that they provide a bond prior to the start of construction for ENS and the site work, which was twenty one thousand seven hundred and twenty five dollars. So when they were going through and trying to figure out what the format of the bond would be based upon our, our bond policy. Anything that doesn't fall into the requirements has to go to the commission for review and consideration. They have provided. What they've provided has been reviewed by Halloran Sage and there are no issues, so don't need to modify anything. So I, I don't need any action on this because it's in accordance with the policy. So that, that will be submitted, we'll sign the original document in the next couple of days and they'll be getting started with the site work. So I don't need any action on this section.
What is the bond for?
Because of this, because of just the, the site work, ENS and then wetlands, they're providing an erosion and sedimentation control bond up front.
Okay.
So it was approved with that, with that condition and originally I thought that they were gonna request a modification to the, the type of, of format of the bond, but they're, they're submitting it as required or the type that's required by our policy, so we, you know.
The one they started today?
Well, they may have started with on that side or on the other piece. But they shouldn't have started with too much.
No, they didn't, but.
I mean, they, they, their excavation guys shouldn't have gotten started with any significant soil disturbance until they have, they have this stuff signed, they may have started with tree clearing, but I don't know, I don't know. Hopefully not too much. So I don't need anything on this, thankfully.
Unfinished business? Threat amendments for section one, one, home occupations.
So this, the table that you have reflects everything that we've talked about to this point and then in red, the specific changes from the last meeting. So it incorporates all the previous discussions. So the only things that are red are what we talked about at the very last meeting. So we modified the permitted exterior evidence to say limited visible evidence or indication the operation may be permitted under the special use permit category. We clarified the percent of building used for the occupation. So under home occupation, that second section shall not occupy an area within the principal dwelling, which is more than fifty percent of the livable floor area of the home. So we, we took out some of the repetitive language there and then added the not. And then same thing for the rural home business. We had talked about the accessory buildings and so that category got added and, and, and basically states that for the home occupation approved by staff, accessory building shall not exceed the footprint of the principal dwelling. And then left it open for the special use permit tier that would go before you guys. The last change was just to I took out the word customers and visits from members of the public. I don't want to get into what a customer is or is not, so we just took that out. It's not to exceed four per day. That number again can go up or down. The last thing that we talked about was vehicles and equipment and the differences between them and who should be allowed what. So we, we talked about what those might include and the commission had some thoughts on that. So at the bottom, you're seeing proposed language or defining each of those. We don't currently define them in the regulation, so we don't have a definition for commercial vehicle, for example. So business vehicle is a motor vehicle used in conjunction with a business with or without business lettering or signage with a gross vehicle weight rating of less than twenty six thousand pounds. The commercial vehicle is the same, but basically is in excess meets or exceeds the twenty six thousand. And then equipment is a trailer, piece of machinery or part thereof used in conjunction with, with a business operation. So those I, I, I reviewed a couple of examples, but really tried to just think about how would we be looking at these if we were trying to deal with exterior evidence or, you know, the other thing that could come up, we kind of talked about people that have take home trucks and other things. And so a business vehicle you can have, so even if we, even if we had no choice, if somebody hasn't had a business vehicle that they took home and they weren't operating the business, let's say they didn't own it, but they were an employee, I mean, if they needed to, if, if for some reason had, we had to come to, to formalize that, they could come in under the home office because they're allowed one business vehicle. So they, they could register or they could authorize that one business vehicle, but nothing in excess of the twenty six thousand. Not, no equipment, no, no other vehicles in conjunction with that. But I tried to think about creating something that would, would allow for some flexibility for, for contractors and other people that have these things, but not allowing it to get so out of hand that some of the smaller residential areas, you know, would sort of have this proliferation of, of vehicles that could be in the road or other things.
Does that include, this, this is just a random, uh, long haul trucker, local trucker who brings the whole truck and trailer except like one day, but they're kind of an example.
Well, it would, sorry, well, by include, I mean, it wouldn't allow it. So if you are along an over the road truck driver and you have a semi with a trailer and you park it at home, this regulation wouldn't allow it. I think you'd have to come in for a special permit. If you park it at home once very frequently, it's gonna be one of those things that's gonna be hard for us to address because we have to provide thirty days for them to comply with any notice or order. So we're gonna send them a notice and say, you, you've got to remove the truck with thirty days, which they'll do. And then, yeah.
And the, I don't know, the, the truck doesn't count as that. If they don't have the trailer, I don't think.
So.
There are some people who bobtail and they just pull in the driveway, the bobtails.
So that, so that's a good segue to the gross vehicle weight rating is what we're using. So the gross vehicle weight rating of a Freightliner tractor is eighty thousand pounds. So that would qualify, even if it was just the trail, the, the tractor.
Okay. That's, that's where I'm thinking is, you know, someone who just bobtails into their yard and parks the bobtail.
So they were gonna do that repetitively. Then they would come in under commercial vehicle and they would need to get a home occupation under tier two.
Which isn't a big deal. They're not a full fledged business and not to go hearing anything.
Right.
Cause we have some of those in town. You, you see them just parked periodically.
And so that, I guess that's the question is that with that, if someone said, I'm an, I'm an over the road trucker and I want to be able to bring my tractor home with me if I'm in between jobs and I want to park it at my house. The answer is yes, you can. You need to get a permit from staff. Is that, is that the answer that the commission would want staff to be giving? Does that seem like too much of a requirement, too less of a, too, too small of a requirement?
How much is home occupation?
Well, uh, I think it's eighty five.
For a year or two years?
Uh, so we're not, we're not including the renewal. So there, there is no renewal. The commission can require what we're calling compliance reviews. So you can say, we're gonna do a compliance review where, where the applicant or the owner will have to demonstrate compliance with the permit one year, two year, five years or whatever, based upon what it is. But for the staff ones, we're not requiring the annuals.
So it's a one time fee.
It's a one time application, but I, I'm, I just mean, are you comfortable with someone getting approval from staff to bring a tractor, trailer, tractor home with them? We can't, we don't regulate the frequency. So yes, they could do it in between, but they could also do it every night. That's what this sets up. I just want to, you know, we'll just use that as an example.
I agree, but depending on where, where they are, you know, are you gonna be bringing a bobtail into the village town thirty two or somewhere out in the middle of nowhere, really?
That's always the problem with the, the, the whole town is covered. We don't get the regs. We don't really get.
Yeah, no, I know. I'm just saying.
I know you know that.
I think the bobtail would be fine as long as they know they cannot bring the, a trailer home with them. For the home occupation. They would have to, it's their rural business if they, well, no. Oh, no, that was technically Mansfield. Was the Wellington Mansfield line and the trailer was always parked on Mansfield side of the property.
So.
That would be a problem with the screening thing as well.
Right.
If I think of all the people we know that do that, that don't have their truck screened. And how would that? Well, they could.
Not really. There's, there's great properties that I'm thinking of right now.
Again, right now with all the leaves out, it's pretty well screened. January, it wouldn't be.
Right. So as it stands, they would need to have, or is it? Well, there's no, no other evidence. So they could have evidence of a business vehicle at the staff level, but not of a commercial vehicle. If it, if they had a commercial vehicle at the staff level, you see screening there, all commercial vehicles and equipment shall be stored indoors visually screened.
Right, I know, that's, that seems a little.
That's, that's hard for the over the road driver who just it's stopping once a week or twice a week. They're not parking it all the time. And they're not technically, that's not their business. They just, they're, that's their company car.
Yeah, so it would have to be the exception, not for the, the common, because the
I don't know what the.
Over the road trucker occurs once in a while.
Yeah.
The people that store their trucks that they use in daily use. Happens every day.
So.
On thirty two, on three twenty, on Elgidge Road, on whatever.
There's a, there's a prop, we're dealing with this, we've looked at Talons. We're dealing with this right now in Talon. There's an eight acre property that is located off the road. It's a rear lot. It's, I don't know, three thousand square foot house, maybe on eight acres on Mile Hill Road. Right as you get off eighty four there and you go right on your way up the hill. Mother, fa- father, mother, son, all drive trucks, all parked on the property. Neighbors complain because they don't like hearing the air brakes and the backup alarms coming and going with the windows open. The, their zoning regulations don't allow multiple of those vehicles. So tell them we initiated and of course, we're in action and went through the whole thing, looked at the vehicle weights, looked at all the things and they can't have them. So they are, it seems they're going to be petitioning the Planning and Zoning Commission for a text amendment to allow for multiple commercial vehicles by special permit, provided certain things are met. The property has to be double the minimum size. So instead of three acres, you'd have to have six. They have to be screened. Some other language that they're gonna be including. I don't know what will happen to it, but these guys are like, we sleep with our windows open and these trucks come and go, hear air brakes and we hear them, you know, the Jake brakes going down the hill and we hear backup alarm.
That's the thing, you shouldn't hear the Jake brakes. If they've got no trailer behind them, there's no reason for that Jake brake to come on. And that's a, that's a state thing. You're, they're not supposed to have their Dakes going up and down forty, seventy four.
Yeah.
I mean, they're on, but.
So you know, and we've, we're talking about this in other places too, which is like boats and RVs and other things. And I think you have to think about the smaller neighborhoods and if someone should, you think it's reasonable for someone to have one of those things. If they, if they're, you know, taking off at five o'clock in the morning or coming home at two o'clock in the morning, you're gonna be hearing some of those things. Maybe it's reasonable, maybe it isn't, I don't know, but I would think more about, do I want to have five of these in my neighborhood and less about that one anomaly that would do it exactly correctly or have been doing it forever, because there's less and less of those. And, and the other ones are the ones that people tend to call and have issues with, call our office with.
It just sounds like the farmer who's been there forever doing it and then someone moves in and goes, oh, I don't like.
Yeah, well, in that case, yeah.
Situation.
If they're doing it and they've been doing it forever, then their grandfather is preexisting and we're not gonna tell them now they have to stop. But yeah, it's, I, it's one of those damned if you do, damned if you don't.
The, my other question would be, how many people are gonna come in and say, hey, I need a home occupation because I park my truck at my house fifteen times?
Zero. But if the complaint comes in, the guidance from us will be, you need, you can keep the truck, but under these standards, you gotta get a permit, you've gotta have it screened or you, you know, you, you could include language like shall not be parked between the house and the street, whatever. But it's a difference between saying it can't be there, find another place for it to go, or it can be there, but you've got to do some stuff. You've got to screen it or park it with some, you know, whatever.
Is screening defined?
Well, right now we allow, we changed it to allow for the limited screening under the special permit category, but under the staff category, there's no, it, it, there's no evidence. We built that flex into your permits, but we don't, as staff, we can't really.
Right, now just, what do I, how, what is, what is screening? What does that mean? Does it mean invisible or does it just mean flurry? Does it mean sort of keeping with the landscape? I don't know, we could go on and on about that. I don't know what that really means.
Breaking up.
Break up the outline, right? Is it a, is it a, is it a lattice fence? Is it wrong? Evergreens? Is it a hydrangea? I mean, who knows why? I mean, there's a lot of different ways to screen things. And again, I can see it in the woods in January, really, really far. Now I can't. So things that well, I find things often in the winter.
Just because we don't know what screening should be, doesn't mean that it's not defined somewhere.
No, but no, I know, we don't utilize that once we, once we.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I don't know if we have a depth.
No, I'm sure we, I'm, I'm sure we did what it was just like.
And a lot of this has to do with what's the proximity where this is going to occur to the next resident. You know, if there's.
It could be natural screening.
There could be, right. But if you're on, you know, everybody's on one point eight acre lot.
Right. For us, we've often talked about dads inside.
Yeah.
There's very few people in that area. So if we were to say that should be screened, basically it's mostly for passersby. It's not really for the people across from them. There is no one.
Right, that, that, they're a loose shot there.
Yeah.
What?
That's on Lucio.
That's where they parked the fire truck. And yet there's no way they can screen that unless they planted evergreens right on the road, right on the end of the road. Their stuff's right in the front yard.
That's where you would screen if you had a commercial building.
No, no, I know, it is, but we wouldn't allow a commercial building in that area. It's.
We're talking to say, the screening could have a place there.
Yes, yes, yeah, just. I don't know, we, we get accused of not being business friendly often in this, from this commission. And this is sort of another damn munition for that argument. And I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I was thinking aloud.
I didn't want to discourage anybody. Hey, you know, getting that job, that's long balling and hey, I get the chance to come home, the only way I can is I gotta bobtail in my yard and well, it says in the town ordinance, I can't bobtail in marriage, so I can't, like, I don't want to push someone out of a jet like that.
Right, right, right.
You know? That's just it. I don't know why it popped into my head.
Take of all these people that, like you said, that has his trucks on three twenty, Randy Falco, all these guys all the time have their trucks and parking in the driveway. It's gonna be.
And not all of them, that's not really where the business, you know, paperwork for the business isn't at that house somewhere else.
Right, right, right.
So that's where the thirty foot tall garage is.
Yeah. One that shouldn't be.
I don't, I don't know if that's a residential practice or not. Most of my stuff isn't a shit.
Well, this is just, it's gonna be a reoccurring uh, issue. I mean, there's no really solid thing. I mean, we, we, we kicked this around for a while.
We have.
And I think we've made it a little more straightforward. We've considered quite a few options.
I like this version though, that's not like, I think the improvements make sense. They verified a lot of questions.
Has there been enough complaints, Mike, to kind of push it one way or another to kind of answer some of those questions when, that you've been asked by residents?
Complaints? No. I think really I, I, I can't think of anything recently or even in the last couple of years related to a lot of, any, any significant operation.
Well, it's like Litwin though, this, this does speak to Litwin's propane. That's what, this is exactly what the neighbors were talking about. But they could hear the trucks and they could see them. And they didn't like that. So if this was in place, if, if this was in place, we would have had, well, I, I think they did do what we, we basically asked him to do these things that are on this list, right? More or less than that, right? The one they were doing, the propane, they have them, he put the fence up and all that. Basically, this is now, this is written, somebody could read it ahead of time and know, so that's not.
Yeah, because. Gray area.
Right, that's right.
How, how, how is this interpreted?
Exactly. It wasn't clear.
I think the major issue there was when does a home business become a commercial business?
Right.
I don't know. Have we answered this question?
And I think you've got your rural home business now, which is
Yes, I like that.
You're not a commercial property. You don't need to be in the commercial property zones. Yet. We've had to push that.
Right.
I think one of the things that we did include following the feedback we got through that process was, yeah, when, to your point, when does a business get too big? And previously, the regulation didn't really draw that line. They, they do in some respects now because they're saying you were limiting the number of business vehicles, commercial vehicles, equipment. The special permit allows you to limit members, visits for members of the public, required parking, we limit the number of non-resident employees. So at some point, if you just look at the equipment, if someone ends up with five business vehicles or three commercial vehicles or a lot of equipment, they've exceeded those numbers, then, then they're too big.
So this, okay, so that's a good point. They reached that point and
Cease and desist?
And.
Well.
Find a commercial space.
So how, I'm gonna play devil's advocate again. How does that fit with Litwin's? Because technically, there's four commercial vehicles, isn't there? Two propane trucks and two septic trucks?
Excavator and.
So what does that work? Because they're set, technically he could have been as two separate home occupations.
So there was no definition for these standards previously and the interpretation that had been made by previous staff, I guess, was if I can't read the signage from the road, I can't, I can't tell you it's a commercial or, or vehicle associated with the business.
They allow two square feet of signage.
Yeah. So those trucks were not parked in a way that you could read the signage. They don't, I don't know if they even all have signage. And at the time.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, if you were to go right now at this pass, would he be in compliance with that anymore?
So his approval has a specific designated area for him to park vehicles in. Everything else has to be not visible. So he has that little parking area right off the gate. And he could put those there, but if he's running propane, you need, the, the septic trucks are supposed to be in the back forty somewhere. So.
But isn't that still out of compliance?
Well, his permit would predate anything we're gonna do here anyways. Yeah.
So, but say someone new in that same situation, they have two vehicles. They come in for a separate we go from just the one, I have one home occupation or whatever, or rural, small rural business. Now I'm gonna come in for a separate one. We can't, okay. In his, if, if that were to come back, we would have based on this, had to deny that propane set of trucks because it's the same property, even though it's two separate businesses.
Yeah, if he exceeded that for business, two commercial, four equipment, then yes, you would have to, you'd, you'd tell him, you know, you can, you can run the business out of the house, but you can't have those trucks on site.
Yeah.
That, that's where I would think that's it.
Okay, that's, that's right. You don't, doesn't mean you can't have, if you want, if you've, if you've grown enough to where you have to park more vehicles and you have to go find a commercial spot, lease, rent, buy and park all your other stuff there.
Right.
Okay.
I think the nuance is with the tractor, you know, trolley pole, you're not gonna have your business at home. Your business is your truck and you're just parking it there. To me, I think you, you make this, make that distinction in the regulation so that you're not.
Put a little asterisk on it?
Yeah, I mean, if, if the home is the business, if that's what he does, and it's just a, a matter of legal record. It's not like he's getting traffic to come in and out of his property. He's coming in, he's parking his truck and then he's, he's taking off, you know, on his next job.
Just the bobtail or the whole unit?
The whole unit.
Because I mean, that could present some, some odd traffic flow for other street, for certain streets on a regular basis, like daily. Not really intended for that.
Yeah.
I think the bobtail, I'd be okay with that. I don't, I mean, the whole unit coming in and out all the time.
I'm just thinking of the three properties that are popping in my head that, you know.
Do they bring the whole unit?
Yeah, there's not a lot of land. They bring the whole unit and they're not that far from the road either.
Three twenty State Road kind of has different implications. But if it was other town roads, I don't see it having the same appropriateness.
Depending on the size of the trailer, it should be.
Forty, forty fifty four.
But in order to avoid someone saying, well, I have two businesses, I do this and I do that. I've got six acres. And they have you know, four business vehicles, two commercial and four pieces of equipment for each business. Well, say they only had three acres. Is there something that we should do to specify that the the rural home business and home occupation? The, the rural home business and home occupation. Only one of those businesses can occupy.
That's it.
A what?
Uh, I mean, we could certainly make that clear, um.
I, I, I really think we should.
I, I think that's where the. Yeah, Litwin's, that's what the people were like, you've got too many things, so what's, how can? So that makes sense, how can you have a home occupation and a rural business at the same time?
One site. We're talking about.
Or. How, how can you have two rural businesses on one site and have double the amount of equipment? You know, I think we need something to prevent that, because somebody's gonna contend.
Exactly.
Rules are made for a reason, and that's usually because somebody.
D B A and this and that.
It says minimum lot site, it doesn't say maximum lot site, it doesn't say if you have ten acres, well then, all the rules are out the, out the window.
Right.
It says minimum lot site, three acres, does not specify anything more than that.
Right.
And it's talking about one site. Site could be ten acres, could be twenty acres, could be three point one acres, still one site.
True, true. Um.
So I don't see why that would open, wouldn't open a door.
Okay. That's the way, you know, again.
Well, there's minimum lot size for a home occupation. I could, I could put my home occupation in.
Well, we, we are talking about a rural occupation that has a limited number of vehicles.
Yeah, but he's saying, well, what, why can't I have?
On the same.
Yeah, how many on the same lot, and how many? I don't say, why not, I can have a home occupation and a rural business.
Well, you're gonna apply for a special use permit, how many of those you think we're gonna give you? Probably.
I'm not sure that running multiple businesses out of a residential home maintains this as an accessory used to a. Single family home, I mean, at some point.
Yeah.
If, if. I don't know, if, if the dad or the father, or the, I don't know, some, one occupant does. Does one type of business and another occupant does, I mean, they have, I guess it's possible that you have set two businesses.
Yeah, what is?
Single occupant entrepreneurs that have separate business vehicles and. I don't know, maybe one's a plumber, self-employed, and one's a hairdresser, self-employed.
Yeah.
And they both have business vehicles, and I guess it's possible, um.
Yeah, I, I think that's where we're like, it's one.
And there's all kinds of iterations that could be awesome.
Yes.
So that's where staff comes in.
Yeah, I, so talent has language that says you can have. Two home occupations, one home occupation and one home business, one home business and one, like, they have that, and it, it just, to me. I've never seen it happen, I've never seen it asked for, it's never come up.
Okay.
It just seemed like. You know, an extra couple of paragraphs that wasn't needed, but if you think it is, we, we certainly have it.
Paragraph is maybe something that says, you know, if the applicant of a rural business already has one of the existing smaller ones, or you're something smaller going bigger. Why, you know, it should come to. Before the committee, instead of just the staff saying, okay. You know, so, something that just says, hey. Red flag.
Well, yeah, it's great that you're successful, but in a.
Fill out the space in felt spots of the extra building, stuff that's there, some other building, what's the one that's on the curb? That's not occupied. Grab some fishing gear. Occupy some of those.
One sixty five river.
Whatever number that comes.
The other thing is, now that we've done away with approval for a home office. We've given up the ability to. Address whether they're one or five.
And do we care, I mean, if, 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 if.
I don't know.
Do we care how many businesses they're running out of their own?
Do we?
I mean, you know, and so you got your farm, so that's, that's one business, you're raising cows, and now you've got. Home office, okay, but what I'm just saying, let's just, so I'm just thinking, so you got your farm. And, and you raise some, some, some cows and chickens, and then you have your equipment, and you have your, your excavation business, and then somebody's doing real estate. And you've got an online presence, and so you might, you could have four or five LLCs operating on it one. Do we care? If there's no real visible evidence of those other businesses? Like somebody who's just has a real estate license, and they go out and they have some listings, and they list their home addresses, their office, do we? Do we need to care about that, is that important? Is. And also, things occur to me too, is there isn't very much commercial land in Wellington. So if you want to have a commercial business, or if you have, wanna have a business, it's probably gonna be a home business, because where else are you gonna go? You can't do it in Wellington, because we don't have a lot of commercial zones.
Well, Wellington isn't looking to create more commercial.
Talk to E D C, I'd say they have a typical point of view.
Well, but.
I mean, no, we, we say we wanna build our tax base for businesses.
Maybe we can start by filling our empty spaces.
Well, well, yes, yes, and, and, and maybe that is, again, that's what I think we need to point, just, it's another little personal per se. I think we do need to think about our planning, we are planning, and this is all regulatory. What are we doing to help these people that do have a business that's thriving? How do we help them grow and remain in Wellington? It's great to say, oh, this is great, we don't like it anymore, cease and desist, and then they.
So we discovered the home office, so hey, you're now in home occupation, you, you bumped up now, because you're expanding, well, now you're up to a rural business.
Mm-hmm.
It just has.
And again, this is for stuff going forward, where people are coming in with. A plan, and they're, they're probably more willing to comply, we're not, we're not hammering down on all the businesses that are already there to say, this is your new standard.
Well, it might be one of the suggestions that.
Complaints are gonna come.
Out of that E D C study.
Yes.
That will. Identifying areas that should be commercial.
Okay, but. But the complaints are gonna come from existing businesses, like, the new businesses will be able to say, this is what you have to do. If this is what you wanna do for your rural home business, this is how you have to comply, and if you don't like it, then you can't do your rural home business, and they'll say, okay, that sucks, I'll move to something else. But the complaints are gonna come from the businesses that are already there, and then staff is gonna say, well, their grandfather did, well, their grandfather, there's a lot of. There's quite a few businesses that we've all said, we know that we can picture them, that are not gonna be in compliance with this, and I'm not saying that's bad.
Wouldn't they have to then come before the ones who aren't listed? Because I imagine some of the ones we're thinking of don't have a home occupation or a home office.
That's a good question.
And they would have to then, because complaints are coming, then they'd have to come before, and okay, now I need to. Get. Out of the dirt pile that I'm in, so let me now meet one of these.
That's.
Maybe it'll actually increase your revenue.
I know, we also might be.
And, you know, we, we scrutinized a guy who was repairing lawnmowers. But we haven't scrutinized a guy who's repairing heavy duty equipment on his farm. Because we don't know about.
Right.
So this is like a good thing.
So what, 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 what happens though, when this person's been doing something for a long time, and they finally want to come in, say, I wanna comply? And then they say, I'm sorry, you can't, and now we're putting you to cease and desist, that's hurtful.
If someone can demonstrate they were lawfully existing at the time of adoption of this regulation, and they are grandfathered, if somebody never had a home occupation. But they're operating home o- o- occupation of some kind, and. They're just, they've just not been doing it, and they've not been in compliance, or somebody has a home occupation approval that they're not in compliance, but they're not covered. It's not anybody doing a home business as of the date of this regulation is, is good to go. So someone that, that is running one now, that doesn't comply, and is going to be running one tomorrow after this regulation comes into effect whenever. They're not covered, um, they have to, and the burden is on the applicant to demonstrate that they are a law existing, they're conforming use.
And we still may not find out some of these, because no one's made a complaint.
Right, all right, that list of businesses that we got, that seem way short. Um, it was like a single page.
Right.
And then a whole lot of people that are, so clearly, if that's who we have as registered businesses in town, there's an awful lot of people out there.
Well, that's the people that have gotten home occupation permits, the red, number of businesses registered in town is in the hundreds.
I see, okay, so those are just, those are just the home.
Those are the permits that we have records for.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Going back, you know, as far as we, we could find, but, you know, we've discussed with the E D C, and we have business lists, um. That we brute force put together, that we've gotten from the assessor's office under personal property declaration, and also looking at the secretary of state for what's listed here.
Mm-hmm.
There's a lot.
There's a lot, yeah.
More than you, more than I expected, but.
I like the work that's been done, I think, I think it's good, I, I think it's needed, I think it's necessary to have some structure to this, but we have very little.
I think the, 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 this thing that I think about is, would we rather tell the person who's in the audience? I'm sorry, you can't do that, you can't keep your, your eighteen wheeler on the property, because it's just not appropriate, and we just, we don't, we don't like what, you know. Think that that makes sense in residential zone, or would we rather tell the person who shows up here who's frustrated because their windows are open, they don't have air conditioning, and they hear this truck come and go all the time? And we tell them, it's allowed. I- in one, if, if we get a bunch of, you can't do it, and we start thinking, well, a lot of people have been asking this, and, and, you know, you can always change it down the road to allow it. If you, if you allow one or two, or, or somehow it gets unruly, and we have these all over the place, and they're creating a lot of conflict. You can still make amendments, we're not gonna get those people that come into play, we can still make those adjustments, but it's just a matter of. Which conversation are you more comfortable with having? And I don't know the answers, but that's how I think about it.
Well, like we do with cannabis, can we say, can we make a formal, like, could we go to an agreement that? We will review this, if we, if we adopt this, then our calendar year after adoption, we look at it again, like, like when we just did with the cannabis, we said, how many complaints are like nothing? We did all that work, and there was a lot of talk about it, but after, the aftermath has been. Pretty quiet, the, the residents of the town did not freak out, and they didn't have a lot to say. They were inspired to some, some strong language leading up to it. Maybe the same thing, because this will have to go to public hearing.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll certainly gonna get a lot of feedback, which may temper or alter how we feel about.
We do it in July, and no one's here.
A long time, yeah. Um, so, yeah, what's the other thought that I had about that?
So certainly a lot's gonna come out in public here, I mean, I, like, again, I like the work that's been done, I, I think everybody's comments and participation was great. And, uh, Mike, I think he did a lot of work to incorporate all that in there. I don't know, I think it'd be better.
So one of the things that I think we can do, and the, the, we'll have to figure out the language, but I do think. That you could tie the. Uh, definitely for the special use permit, rural home business. I'm not a hundred percent certain on the certificate of zoning compliance one, but, um, I think it could be tied to the operator. So one of the things that we worry about is, you know, actually something that's been conducted for so long, let's say they built some big barn or big garage. That, when that prop, when that business closes, when that person sells, retires, moves. The next person that buys that property is immediately gonna be interested, because they may be wanting to conduct the same types of activities. And so what happens is you get this nonconformity that persists, because even though the operation has changed, what you see as a neighbor probably doesn't. I think we can tie at least the special permit to the operator, so that. The right to, to operate that business goes with the property, which doesn't mean that they give it up entirely, but that upon changing of ownership.
It must come back.
Correct, the special permit goes away, the operator, and they would have to come back, so it puts a little bit of a point on it, if you have some really egregious one that you approve, and you say, oh my gosh, why did we ever do that? At some point, it could be a really long time, um, but you don't have this vested land right in the continued operation of a business. Um. Would the commission be on really solid ground if someone came back in and said, I wanna do the exact same thing, but I had a different name? You know, same trucks, same operation, same business type. That'd be tricky, but, um.
Depends on how many complaints you've had from the neighbors.
Right, I think if you can ju- demonstrate that it was out of compliance, but further, if, especially if you determine that there's an issue, we shouldn't have approved it. You make changes to regulations, five years from now, that business goes away, and the property gets sold. I think then you're on much stronger ground to not allow that next occupant. And, and I don't know how much of a risk there is with that, but, um. I do think because it's a home occupation being conducted by the resident as an accessory used to their occupancy of the dwelling. Where we are permitting a business, we're not just saying this, this property checked, has, you know, the, all, can, can operate a home occupation, this property can have a rural home business. So I think there's a little bit of a, of a buffer.
So the permit is tied to the permanente?
Essentially.
Okay.
Right, we're permitting a specific operation accessory to a specific person's, um, more like a license. I think it makes sense, I mean, I've got, uh, customer mine on for it, that's got a big warehouse in the back of their property, they also have a shop. And we built them a new house next door, but he's selling that property in a remote location to try to attract another business specifically to what he has there. And that's how he's marketing it, so I kind of agree with what you're saying, that it goes with. The operator, because then it just prevents possibly some bigger business coming in like, oh, I already have something established here, I can build off of this, and, well, these structures are already there, you know.
How about, uh, special permit is not automatically renewed after change of property, property ownership?
Yeah, I think, um. Was that I'd kicked around. There's two ways to do it, we could build it into, to this, one of the things that I've been including as a recommended condition of approval, if, if it's not there is, um. Uh. Use as whatever, use as a ru- rural home business approval or whatever shall be willfully, use is willfully terminated by the applicant upon, uh, sale of the property. So the term willful termination is how you, you, you can't say you intentionally abandoned your right to a nonconformity or something. Without, as the statute says, considering the intent of the owner, so by stating on the record during the public hearing that they're in agreement with the condition, that they willfully terminate. It goes away, um. So there's, that's another way to do it, but we could, I think including this in here also makes it clear, right, don't go and spend a million dollars on investing things onto your residential property, because. You don't necessarily get to flip that to another operator on the road, you're, sink that money into. A commercial space.
Hmm, hmm. Right, because in theory, you could issue a permit to a company, A B C L L C, somebody comes in, buys that name, buys that whole business. And then changes it dramatically, and then our permit will still be riding along there, and that would be not our intent, I'm thinking. Yeah, oh, yes.
And they can't, like a father can't give it to their son, in the father's name, like, I'm, I'm just, you're, you're selling property, well, what if I don't sell it as a.
Well, if, if they're transferring the property, but still conducting the same business, then I think, then, then they can continue to do that.
Okay, but how, how does that work lately with what you just said for the.
Because for us, we're not, we don't regulate the transfer of ownership, the, the business is continuing, gonna continue to be conducted.
Uh-huh.
They're still running one, you know, the same operation.
Well, it's fast now, like, I'm, I'm just, I'm just, I was just.
Still is as long as he's alive.
Okay.
This is successor to, for civil properties.
Yeah, I, I'm just, just curious, I just, I don't know these things.
I don't think we would take issue with a family transfer, because business is still the same.
Well, that.
That would be my.
As, as long as the kids still.
Yeah. Yeah. I hope we don't get to that. You know, and the external evidence, something's gonna change, the same business is gonna be run out of the same property, it's not gonna go on the market, you know, none of those things happen.
It, it's just, as I said, I don't, in process.
Yeah, I think enforcement and, and compliance could be kinda tricky. Just because what if you. I was thinking of my own personal situation, what's saying, you have a whole bunch of equipment. And you decide to start a business, but you're only doing it with one of the pieces of equipment. But optically, there are people that are gonna say, hey, I can see all that stuff, so yeah, but that's not part of the business, that's just mine, that would probably be allowed. Because it's not, I only have one thing that I use in my business, and all the rest I just use because I like it.
If you run an excavation business, and you have a bulldozer, a dump truck, a bobcat, a backhoe, and something else, and you. And something else and you say, well, I only use the bobcat, I'm probably not buying it. Then you gotta find another way to, I, you know, make it work.
Okay, what about the random person who has a green just because they have a green? No, there's another one.
Well, if there's just one, then that's okay. I mean, there's a lot of nuance that, yeah, I try to review, but. Yeah, I mean, we, we had this issue come up in another town. A guy basically runs landscaping operation. And the winter time he plows snow, he's got like eight F two fifties, F three fifties in his yard. And he puts them registration on him and he gets temporary help and in the winter time he's running. Twelve trucks, but the rest of the year they're just a port pickup. It's in my yard. I own it. It's on the grand list. There's no signage. It's not a commercial vehicle.
No, it is a commercial vehicle.
It's not. It's under twenty six thousand pounds.
Not over six thousand?
So forty-five weeks of the year, they sit and it's just a black pickup truck sitting in his yard. Couple of the, you know, with snow and other things, those things run twenty-four hours a day. They don't have any signage and he, and so he basically said, oh, they're just my personal vehicles. I may use them one or two days here and there. Like it's, it's, that's not how it works. This is, there's no hybrid personal business. And so he, we determined he's growing too big for what he can do on the property. He's given us a list of these are the vehicles that I'm gonna keep on my property, but he's. Found another place to go, a commercial property. It's just, he's just gotten too big and. And I think our regulations and sort of the thoroughfare and talk about some other things, but the other, the other piece to this is that it doesn't create. Excessive traffic noise and disruption to a residential area and. You know, this thing coming and going all the time, idling and plows and sanders and. You're not gonna be able to address all of them unfortunately and, and it's only through that experience that we're able to write regulations that are better than the ones we're replacing. You know, that's the stuff that keeps me up at night, right? Writing a regulation and then having, having the first thing that shows up be the thing that we, we didn't plan for or. You know?
But I do like the idea of reviewing these things that are sort of new. And we can actually put it on the calendar and then make sure it's on the agenda to make, just so we don't forget. So we less reactionary, you know, we won't go ahead.
I mean, we wrote the S D Z and had a one point four million square foot warehouse show up immediately thereafter. There's nothing we can do. It just, you know, so it may happen and it may be one of those things we learned from, but. I, I, I have struggled to find any town that has those set of regulations that I think are. Perfect or, or have something that we've not considered.
We all got our scarrow letters from that experience.
And yeah, no, I thought, I thought that S D C thing was great. I thought that's exactly what we needed and I thought it. Performed exactly to the limits of time. I don't know why people are so upset against it and why we're wrong. Never understood that. I probably wouldn't understand this either. It sounds a lot of controversy.
So what would be the next step?
Well, we have, so I've taken some notes. One is clarifying. Whether or not you can co-locate home op, home office, home occupation, rural home bus- business. We seem to be in agreement that you guys like the. Uh, special permit expiration or being tied to the operation. I'm not sure. If we came to a consensus, at least that I understood with whether or not. This idea of, you know, the bobtail or the bobtail with the tractor, should that be allowed? Should that not be allowed? Do we need to? Address that somehow. Um, and potentially I heard adding some language that if you. Want to operate more than one business type. So if you want a home occupation and a rural home business, or you wanna have two home occupations. Or two rural businesses, I guess, that all of that. Is a by special permit. So I think you could have a home office and a home occupation and you're okay. But two home occupations or anything beyond that essentially. You get a home office plus one, I think. Everything else would be by a special permit. So that you can, you can kind of look at that. I think trying to clarify and say, well, you can have this and not that. And really from our perspective, trying to figure out what compliance looks like. I think that could be complicated and I think it's maybe to just say, if you're doing multiple. Businesses that have at least some exterior evidence, that's just by special.
Are you gonna do anything with the willful abandonment terminology?
Yeah, so that is, we will, we will do at least for the special permit, tie that to the operation or the operator. Those were the things that I.
Operator. The permanente, whoever we officially find that's for, because like you said, like Desi Adams. Desi Adams is not the same, it's the same business, but it's a new operator. It's been bought out.
Right. Well, they're not under home business.
No, but I'm just saying something of that, the name. We don't want the name transferred. We want. Permanente is the one they sell or.
Yeah, so I, you know, I think we would do it that way and literally the business, the, the approval would be, you know, to Joe Smith. In operation of Joe's plumbing. Right? That's, that is the activity that is then permitted. So I'm gonna, I, I gotta figure out exactly what the, what the actual words include, but that is what we will, we will do. I just picked up the best way to, to write it. So those are the changes that we kind of talked about.
I have one other comment. And I, I mentioned this before, it's the signage for two square feet. It's pretty minimal, minimal. I mean, that sign on the wall is, is bigger than two square feet.
Well, maybe not. No, that's one square foot.
I know we have talked about signage before, but.
I would think a rural home, no, maybe you're right. Maybe home occupation, two square feet for the sign. But maybe for a rural business, we often four. It's not much bigger. But we wanna promote those businesses.
If, you, your wish is my command. You just tell me what you wanna put on here. Uh, some towns use the term announcement sign. So the idea is I'm on, I'm on Daleville School Road and I'm looking for Paul's Plumbing Business. I already, I'm on the right road and I know what I'm looking for, not as I drive by, oh, Paul's Plumbing Business is there. So it's more to guide people that are already headed there versus attract attention. We could put two, we could put four, we could put whatever you want. You, you tell me what you think is appropriate.
I don't, I have no idea. I don't care.
Makes sense, because if you went like eighteen inches by three feet, you know, you're still in that four square feet. You still has four tiles.
So Joe, just for an instance, what are those uh, uh, signs that you have on the side of your vehicles?
Oh no, on the side of the road, like your sign on the road. That's a road sign. Signage should, should say.
But for a sign on the side. Location of my business.
This is two by three. Twenty-four by thirty-six. So, so be short.
That, that would be a big sign in someone's front yard.
Yeah, twenty-four.
That looks big in a house and a big, big in a road. Big in your, big in your bedroom.
So maybe not to exceed six square feet and play with the.
Does that bleed into our, does that come up with our own sign regulations or?
Well, I mean, our sign regulations are a whole different animal that we need to address and, and we'll have to go back and refresh this when we do that, but. Um, yeah, they, they really, uh, the approach that we took and, and got to was. Uh, by zone, right? So we can't regulate. We can regulate commercial speech, but we can't regulate. How, what someone's speech is based upon what type of commercial speech it is. So.
There's a sign limit for the town green. There's a size limit.
For the town green? We have, but I don't think.
And it's a timeline too.
Doubt, I don't think someone, like a Dollar General, that's a commercial speech. We can regulate that. They can't put a sign on the green. So most, if not all, what you see on the green probably qualifies as a sign.
Something like, that was going on, I think this is before we might here's.
Probably the gun range. If it's not the warehouse, I just go back to the gun range, even though I wasn't here for it, but that's like the last.
But that was, oh, you can't have a sign out. Just the town green.
I can, I can still recall the smell of the gymnasium floor that they had just done in the warehouse and that was two years ago. So I don't feel like I missed out. P T S D. So do we wanna pump this up from two?
Well, go to four. Yeah, I think.
Four is acceptable.
Yeah, excessive.
Four would fit this, that's about the size.
Political signs, those things must be close to three square feet.
Roughly, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, if we go to four.
Four.
That's not.
Here's the other thing, they're allowed, they can have signage on the vehicle. So I mean.
And that's not regulated at all, like.
We are not proposing to, no, some towns do. Well, I think one of the, one of the first. Signage on a vehicle in excess of a certain square foot kicked it over into a commercial category from like a business category.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm thinking what my C N C will hold and what we're signing.
Raps or the clients.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I know sometimes.
My C N C.
Trying to regulate that.
But the sign.
Was a tractor trailer driver, could you put something in there as far as like the number of consecutive days it's parked on a property before they have to screen it?
Before they have to what?
Oh, or put it, or put it in a building.
In a row. So is there three days in a row? Yeah, so one of the things that, that can be done and some places do is take. Separate between parking and storage. Parking not to exceed three consecutive days is allowed. Storage, three days or more, not allowed. So the storage of a commercial vehicle, which is, you know, unlocated on a piece of property for a period of, not, you know, three days or more, et cetera. So we could do something like that.
But is it really three days if they're leaving the property each day? Sorry, and coming back? So to me, that wouldn't be stored.
Well, no, I, I, no, because if. Even if we did, you know, door knocks and we told them, you're in violation, you gotta do this. If there's an issue with the vehicle, the remedy is to remove the vehicle. If they remove the vehicle and then bring it back three days later, we don't. They're in compliance, so it's, it's a cat and mouse, but. Um, yeah, it would be three consecutive, so it would be in a row. They've got rid of it, you know, two days on, two days off, it wouldn't qualify.
I just don't see a lot of those people who. They work for a company, they bring their vehicle home. Go and put them in for a home office or a home occupation.
Gives them the weekend.
I, I just don't see those, some of those, not the one who parks every night, but the one who just comes on.
Well, these are the owner operators. They show what? Couple of days of a week?
Yeah.
At, at most. And you know, if you have your.
Well, it depends on where they're, if they're long calling or local haul.
Right.
So if I drive, if I, if I own and operate my own semi truck and I wanna take it home.
That would be your business is there, yeah.
So the answer is you should, they should be able to do that. Or no, yes, no?
Occupation because if they're owner operator, they're operating.
Right. But you, but the commission feels like that's inappropriate and they should be able to do that and we wanna make sure that that's something that the regs don't prohibit.
Oh, it's a home occupation. They've got one commercial vehicle going.
I think that would be fine and I think the person who.
Volkswagen, so it's harder to camouflage.
That's right. Um, and we, we're fine with the truck and the trailer.
Lot of sizes big enough.
We don't get it, we don't get to have the ifs. If you're uncomfortable with it. We could put.
I'm okay with the bobtails. I, I, I guess the trailer, the trailer. If it's not hindering traffic and stuff, you know, whatever.
Fifty-three feet belongs on a quiet road.
Is a truck, is a trailer box fifty-three feet? That's what they are.
Well, that, that, uh, fifty-three footer is not supposed to be off the road except for delivery. They cannot come off a main road except for delivery. There is a very big.
I don't think we're gonna round, measure them. The point is, are we, are we putting a box with a trailer on a small street or not? Regardless of whether it's over forty, fifty feet.
Well, for how many years we had two of them parked right here at the, at the top of three twenty.
Well, maybe one on Y road right outside. The, the thought is we could, we could cap the total length of a commercial vehicle at. X, forty feet, fifty feet, sixty feet, twenty feet, I mean. But, but if we define a business vehicle and then we define a commercial vehicle. That bobtail's gonna have a gross vehicle weight of eighty thousand pounds, most likely. So it'll, it will exceed twenty-six thousand. So it will be a commercial vehicle. So if we cap the total length of a commercial vehicle.
I think we'll make a compliance nightmare.
Well, if you said twenty-four feet, you wouldn't have a, wouldn't have a trailer. That was less than that.
But you have some of those if, if someone's moving and they do super long calls and they have a house on wheels, some of those are close to that twenty-four feet early. Without a trailer. They're huge.
Me a straight job, yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're huge. Some of those ones.
So the other thing that I was trying to get at is. Are we saying we're good with anybody bringing home a, a, a tractor? Or just the people that are running the business? Cause the, I mean, the other thing that we could do is we could clarify vehicles and equipment owned by the property owner. Which creates a little bit of a issue if you have the guy who's, you know, trying to do.
How you gonna check that? What, what I was thinking was basically, you know, trying to create a financial hardship on the guy that's driving a truck, you know? But if it's there for, you know, more than three days and it's storing, then okay, then you have to put the, the screening in or come up with a filling to put it in. That, that's where I was coming from. I mean, we're, we're changing our zoning laws for, you know, affordable housing. But then we're penalizing the, the people that, that have a job.
Most people don't drive a truck.
We're, we're not really penalizing the population at large by, by specifying not having a fifty-foot unit on. On Village Street. Okay, some people complain that there's a lot more traffic coming down. Three twenty because of, you know, different detours and stuff. Let's stay a road. I mean, it's, it's built to handle that. It's got the sides, it's got the width, it's got the composition, but however, we have roads in town. We have to keep it up. We wanna put these big trucks on. I think that's.
I'm just, I'm just saying it's like the guy that's doing it for a job, don't penalize.
One or two or three? We got two, we got two, five, six thousand people in town. Who we, who we rolling for? What? Who are we trying to? To uh, look out for? Couple of handful of people have a truck or the rest of the town?
Well, that's my, that's my position. That's my position too.
Okay, I think that the, that they should stay on larger roads.
I haven't run into. Super crazy stuff and then you're gonna put the fire department at the bottom of the hill, uh, this, because they have a truck, doesn't fit down roads. It's bigger than those semi trucks.
It's an emergency vehicle.
It's still bigger and you got to, to run them. I know people who run trailers to move equipment and stuff that don't have. They're running it off of F five fifty.
How many times you on older drove? How many times are you on any one particularly small road? Very occasionally. We're talking about a guy who works and lives. And on the street, he's gonna be there very often. Does not compare to an emergency vehicle. As far as frequency, that's a stretch.
I, I guess I have to see like. Cause I don't, I don't wanna penalize the guy. I, I have friends who, who drive trucks. And it's like I get a chance to come home and I've got a pole, my fifty-three footer, I can I park? And then.
You're ruling for the minority. This doesn't make any sense.
I don't know that it's as small of a minority as you think it is.
Oh, well, how many is it, is it ten, is it twenty?
No, there's.
Is it fifty? Is it two thousand? Is it more than half the town?
But you're excluding someone.
No, I'm just saying that you're ruling for mo- for the minority, you're ruling for a couple dozen people.
We're doing the same thing with affordable housing.
Pardon?
We're doing the same thing with affordable housing.
I don't think we're talking about that slice of the population.
People are complaining about having a booster in town, I mean, come on.
I don't think we're talking about that slice of the population. That's a much bigger slice.
Well, I'm just saying you're trying to make it, make it more amenable for people that have less money, but then. You're gonna screw the guy that, that has a job driving a truck.
The guy driving the truck, if he's making. I, I still say you're ruling for the, for a handful of people at the expense of the rest of the road. One guy, hundred people on the road, ruling for one percent.
And is it that intrusive?
Yes, it is, it is that intrusive, absolutely, it's even intrusive on three twenty. You can see that guy's truck from hundreds of feet away. I mean, it's not intrusive, it does, certainly doesn't blend in, it's not screened, granted, it's not there that lo- that often, the guy has a huge line, but. There's places where people would move a trail, there was a trailer that was being parked on. Within about. Twenty feet of the road on three twenty, and the guy used to back in there, I think almost every night, he's moved. But I mean, that was. Definitely. Out of, uh, out of place.
But no one complained as.
If you have six thousand people, there's no, never made a complaint. Who was really in. So let's enable them. Let's say it's okay, go ahead, have at it.
I don't know, I got that, but if it's not bothering anybody.
Well, it bothers me that there's six commercial, five, four commercial trailers parked on a farm on Elders Road. They've been there for five years, also being used for as storage, but to ride up to the street, there's so many ways that that farm is out of compliance, it's crazy. But if nobody ever says anything, it's gonna stay that way.
So there, that's a storage thing, not a parking.
I'm just saying, for example, there are exceptions that were.
Yeah, well, I think some of this stuff where four trailers goes back to the fact that Wellington doesn't have a Blight ordinance. And that would probably come under a Blight.
It is in our, in our code book, I found it, you're not allowed to have that, so.
I mean.
I could, I could, I've already marked the pages. Just haven't decided whether or not to offend my neighbor.
You know, it's, uh. That's why we're trying to make it simpler here, and that's why it's easier for us to have this discussion than. To have Mike try to have the discussion and have, and you know, we'll certainly find out what the public thinks. Well, if the public really, if it has an interest or is, wants to be involved in this process. What they think about what we've come up with. So. I think at this point, Mike, if you make the changes that we, we talked about, and we can, uh. Put it on the agenda next time, we can kick it around the room again. Well, anybody else have any, uh. Other comments that like to have Mike. Work into, no?
They need to be in the form of a motion.
If I'm just gonna make more amendments, no. And I keep in mind, you know, the next step. Maybe following the next meeting would be to say, okay, we feel like this is ready to be scheduled, we referred to CROG, I've said this before, we can always make a regulation more restrictive. But we can't make it less restrictive once we've noticed it, so. If we're unsure, we should always, we should kinda just leave it at a point where maybe it's on the high side and then during the hearing, if people show up and say, you shouldn't allow four business vehicles, we can dial it down, but just to kind of. Keep that in mind, but so I'll make these changes and maybe run it through one more time at the next meeting and then we can. It'll maybe it'll be ready for the.
Okay, thank you. No problem, uh, minutes of May seventh?
I think we approved minutes of May seventh.
Uh, here a second.
Same.
Oh, oh, discussion. Last call. Uh, opposed in favor?
I, I.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay, thank you. Uh, correspondence, Mike?
Um, you have a copy of a referral from Mansfield. It is their amendment to the changes that they're implementing or potentially implementing related to how they'll handle identity housing.
Inducing reaction to the projects that are going on.
Yeah, so I don't think I included in my. Yeah, they've approved like twelve hundred units in the last two years. Uh, they say, they have, they, they, if they all come online, which I'm not sure they will. They will s- they will see more growth over the last, from the last two years than they have over the last ten plus. I don't know that, that all of it will happen, um, and there's still more pressure, but, um, they had really complicated regulations. And they've approved at this point several projects, probably six, number of six. And so they've learned, I mean, they understand what they like, they understand what they don't like, they understand what sections of the regulations they feel got away from them, things that they wish they had available to them. Um, and so we kind of flipped everything on its head and are doing a special development district master plan approach similar to the SDZ. To allow for some discretion, because they know what they want now and the SDD. Uh, process is the only one that really allows you to say, we wanna focus heavily on what these things, what the buildings look like, what type of residential amenities they have. You know, and whether or not we think it's appropriate period, um, so this will apply to, to projects of six units or more. And this will be really the only mechanism that they'll all run through. So whether or not all those project, I mean, you see. The one, what is it, um, the hub is under construction, uh, oh, no, sorry, the standard is under construction across from Carmel Farms or just kind of down.
Yeah.
Right around the corner, right next to that, I think is.
Yeah, really old strip malls.
Eagleville, Green. There's one right next to it behind Toast, the separate development that was approved there, I think that's two hundred.
In the swamp?
Behind, right, yeah. Uh, and then. That was middle, uh, right down at the old golf course, there's one that was done there.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Um.
Just the duck is shut down.
No, all approved, all.
Yeah, well, I have, I have all the information, I have all the stuff to go through, anytime I have all the.
I am surprised though, like that, my duplexes, but they changed the wording, though, that's one thing that kind of stood out to me that instead of being, uh. Do one associate dwelling units constructed side by side with separate entrances, they get away with the side by side, meaning smaller footprint.
Yeah.
Stack them up.
So this is, this is all actually brand new and I had put in there. The side by side, because I thought we wanna have direct access in and out, and in, in, so the Mansfield process is different is then they have a reg- they have a larger commission. So they have a regulatory review commission that meets independently of P and Z, made up of P and Z members, and so all their amendments are run through reg review. When reg review thinks they're at a point where they're acceptable, they then get pushed to the full commission for consideration and hearing and blah blah blah. So I ran that through and I thought we want direct outside access, you know, sliding back door.
Space is first out of it too.
Yeah, and not to have like a, what, like a stacked flats or something.
Right.
And, and the last review that we had at that, I think would have been, you know, this, the sixteen, they, they, um. They didn't want that to be an obligation, so little, they could do nothing that. I personally don't, I, I, I don't love that idea because I just think that the type of housing that, that they're trying to encourage or we're trying to encourage in the region. It just works better if people can get right in and out of there, you know, having someone have to go up the stairs, live above someone else.
Looks less like a, in the city. You know, I had a duplex in Manchester and every house was the same, small lots.
Right.
They were stacked up and, you know, every single thing is the same, so it didn't look.
Right.
You know, it looked like you were in Manchester, not out in Mansfield, so I kinda saw that and I was like, that's kind of a.
Yeah.
Interesting thing that they chose to change.
Yeah, I, I think from an accessibility standpoint, it's a challenge getting stuff in and out and, and just inherently create some issues with someone being above and someone being below. Um, and then we really, one of the things you'll see is we're really pushing is. Amenities, access to open spaces and outdoor recreation and, and creating not just a living unit, but really more like a lifestyle. So that's someone that lives in an apartment has access to the same things as someone who has three acres, and I don't think you get that if you're upstairs, because the person downstairs has the deck or the patio. Um, but I think they're probably cheaper to construct if you have, and so. That's a trade off. So we'll see, see what happens, I think it actually. Yeah, it goes to hearing on seventeen. That's it for that one, yeah?
Okay. Public participation, nobody here, and I'm seeing nobody online, we have one person.
So hand up. Why I'm gonna put my hand up, um, I have a concept that, um, and I just wanna throw it out there, something considered, should the town be exempt from zoning regulations? It's not uncommon for towns to exempt themselves, as just because municipalities. I mean, uh, as it was pointed out to me, everything a municipality does is out of compliance, you have a public works in the middle of a non, it's not commercial. You have a school, it's not commercial, every, you're, you're automatically, the municipalities are immediately out of compliance. So to sort of corral them into compliance is almost, now we have what, what the eight dash twenty four, they've seen one a little while. That, um, which they don't even have to follow, uh, so it's just, it's just that, I, when I heard that, I go, hmm. I just wanna throw it out there to the commission, just not as a, as a plan or just an idea that. Um, and what would that mean? That when, if I remember right, correctly where I've gone astray, it's been a while, but, um, town wants to do something, they submit an eight dash twenty four. For compliance with zoning, and we give it our opinion, they don't have to follow, so it's kind of a weird exercise, but they, you know, it's sort of a. Checking of balance that's there. Yeah, and like, like a firehouse, uh, it's not a compliance, it's, it's not a commercial. Couldn't put a private fire company, an ambulance company in a residential label, it's, now just some thinking about, and that's the extent of my public comment.
Thank you for that, Ian.
Hey, you're welcome.
Anybody else have, uh, any words of wisdom for us? No? Uh, staff report?
So I was, I wanted to follow up on the three twenty seven Ruby Road, we talked about at the last meeting with some of the modifications, so I met with them, um. And. I can go over what the responses were to their questions, or your questions or some of your points. So, uh, the gates will be automated, um, you will, there will have predominantly plate readers, but if you can pull a ticket and get in. Uh, anticipated timeframe to pull up, pull the ticket and go is approximately ten seconds. Um, the site is being designed so that they can get four trucks in a queue, so they'll. They'll be able to have two, one in each lane and then they should be able to get two full trucks off the road. So you really would need five trucks plus no change in the queuing before you're out onto Ruby. Um, most.
That's going in.
Going in. Um. Coming out, there'll be two out, the gates will not release at the same time, so it's not like, it's not like gonna be a checker flag where they're gonna just be rolling out and fighting. Um, and. Uh, so there shouldn't be issues with two trucks coming out neck and neck, trying to do, God knows what. Um, there are no proposed changes to, uh, signage or striping or anything along those lines, uh, on Ruby or anywhere else. They've gotta go to DOT at this point because they're modifying the curb cut, um, so if DOT tells them you gotta do something, then they'll have to. Um, and I'll point out that. Hmm, not all that long ago, uh, we did, through this commission, through our office, via this commissioner vice versa. Did send a letter to DOT basically saying we think that there's sort of a traffic and signage and an education issue with. Vehicles coming out and off the highway and trucks trying to find where they need to go and ask them to keep that in mind with signage, so. Uh, they have that, um, they responded and said they were received, maybe that will come into play here, I don't know, um. We had talked about three out, one in, or three in, one out, um, and they had not considered that, they, they. Would prefer to just have two in, two out, their, their previous plan proposed one in, two out. Um, but based upon volume and the amount of. What they do on a sort of a constant basis, they feel like that will be accurate or acceptable, um. The, there is no real plan to do anything, like I said, with signage or, or otherwise related to passenger vehicles. But the fact that they're gonna have a gate should create additional visual barrier, um. They're gonna, you're gonna have a commercial site there between the ramp and the TA now, so. So number one, hopefully you don't have trucks parked there, which are sort of blocking that, but there is signage there now, if people get off the highway and they turn in there, uh. I guess one of the things I'm trying to figure out is, on an, on an average day, how many vehicles get off the highway or looking for the passenger vehicle parking lot and turn into the truck parking lot? And. I mean, I, I don't know, is it, is it all that many, I'm not sure, there's more than adequate width for them to be able to just flip a U and turn around, it's not like you're stuck. And if they pull a ticket, they're gonna be able to go through the gate and they can pay to get out or they can tuck, staff can raise the gate, I mean, there's things that they can do. I think it sort of, to me, gets into this. Uh, is it a significant enough of an issue for us to try to do something, I, I don't know what else they can really do and they can't put more signage up even if we wanted them to, because it's now gonna be in front of another business, um. We're working with the fire department and fire marshal on what the preferred plan is for how the fire department will respond. We, what it seems like is they'll put a Knox box, I mean, that seems like the preferred approach so that when someone gets in. They can just come out, unlock the gate, the gate will go up and it'll stay up, um, they don't have a proximity sensor in their equipment. And so one of the things that I learned or was informed is that. Sometimes it's people from Wellington responding trucks, sometimes it's mutual aid in trucks, sometimes it's personal people responding from their home to the site because that's faster. And so I can't tell them I need a proximity sensor for the Wellington trucks, cause it might not be Wellington trucks, it might not be a truck. It might be guys in their own personal vehicles and we can't plan for who might be responding, so there's no way for me to. Make that request, and so we kind of hit a, a wall with that recommendation.
Is there any recourse or thought about the business that's going to be establishing right before and say, it turns into a traffic nightmare, now you have people going there and they think, all right, I wanna get fuel before I head back. On the highway and now there is, uh, possibly a much larger influx of vehicles that don't know where they're going. And are causing now a potential issue, is there some way to? So mitigate that or?
The, the downstream parcel has to, has gone to DOT and they have approval for the curb cut, so they're demonstrating the required sidelines, they're also gonna be doing clearing. And so you don't necessarily have a field of vision when you come off the ramp to that, which you may now have.
Yep.
Cause they get, they're gonna be able to do some clearing on that turn and then there's a lot of stuff that's kind of growing up and so. You may actually be able to see a little bit for more, cause you're gonna be looking. Kind of across that site as you're headed down Ruby, uh, and you should be able to see those trucks.
Random question, can I put? On the gate, truck, you know? Trucks only, like it's like I might almost sign the gate so someone's gonna shoot and they can. The problem is if they're in the right lane, they gotta cross those other lanes now that they know that, I think that's where you're gonna see the issue.
Yeah, I mean, I I think they could do something like that, there are some, there's some stuff up now, um, we could ask them to refresh that, but um. I I don't know what those sensors will look like, if they're gonna literally let anybody in or if they're gonna be something that, well, I mean, if it's a plate reader, they're not gonna. I would imagine they're not gonna let a passenger vehicle, and I I don't know.
Could do the same thing.
Yeah.
We didn't.
Um. So they're they're hopeful that having that whole gate system up will will prevent people from making that. They're gonna pull them a little bit farther back, but but, um, you know, I'm not, I'm not totally. Certain of that. I think that was, that was pretty much it as far as questions that the commission had, we talked about other options. As far as getting fire department in, I talked with them cuz there's that direct gated access on the other side of the site. Um. Kind of closer to.
Yeah, it's the back.
Right, so it's, it's a driveway with a gate that gets you right into the parking lot and.
Full coverage, universal.
Well, no, I could tell them, uh, we wanna put a, we wanna lock on it, we want us to have the key, but the Trevor or Alex, um. They don't, they would prefer not to access from that site.
It's it's too hard because it depends on where people are parked, most everything that happens is up on the other end, right near that gate. I would almost see as like if there's an emergency. That the site has to be notified and they immediately send someone out to be able to push a button when they see that truck.
I think it's all automated, I think right from the inside they can do that, and and we could certainly.
Time they don't know if something's going on.
Well, that's true.
And it's more.
Right, if it, if it, if it occupant of a vehicle or there's an issue calls nine one one directly, they may not know.
Yeah, and I I would see that as. Somehow there needs to be some sort of communication and. And the chief who's actually. Willing to tell, we all thought, you know, when that say, hey, let's figure out a plan that. These gates are going in, what do we need to know?
Yeah, I mean, if the, if it doesn't, what, if the Knox box is what we go with. Because it's what it seems like is gonna be the most viable and it doesn't work, then we're gonna have to have a conversation, I've dealt with, there are gate systems that are uh, that respond to siren. And those.
I almost think, well, I can tie it in remotely like a fire. Fire alarm that when that alarm that pink gets sent out, there's something that receives that message that we all receive and says. And it, well, I guess you couldn't just open it up right then, but we could.
The, I think the issue is with the automation is they could, they could remotely trigger the mechanism to open the gate. But if you really wanna just stay open because you have ten guys that are gonna respond with their personal vehicles over the next twenty minutes or so. How do you just say the site's gonna be open, you know, like to tell it that, cuz you're really gonna rely on someone that's working. The Knox box means that we are in control, we're gonna have access to the box and can open it and. That takes out, to me, that is the option that reduces. The points of potential failure, we're not relying on an automated system or an employee or an alarm or this or that and. At the end of the day, if the gate's down, you have to get through, the truck is probably not gonna have any trouble blowing through a little padded thing that's gonna do this, but. Um, you just. I I don't see that as a, as a, as an impediment, but. There's not a lot of options and. Yeah, the system that they had wasn't. So we talked about last time, if any of their responses were like dead on arrival, that we might. The commission may say, you know, we don't want this to go, you know, we want this to come through as a formal application, I don't think any of their responses were unreasonable. Um, the only thing that they, they're gonna just verify is that they, all their bulk and area requirements are met, covers setbacks and all that, but. The last piece will be subject to what the fire folks asked for and ultimately are comfortable with, but. Um. We're just waiting on some final answers from them. But unless the commission feels otherwise, we'll work this through with the fire department and then, um. Do it as an administrative modification to their site plan.
Okay, any other questions? Hey, if not, it's uh nine oh eight, uh. During the meeting of the uh planning and zoning for June fourth.